Okay, Mayor, we are all here with the exception of Joe, who I'm sure will be joining at any time, and then Alex, who is not going to be with us this evening.
All right, well, let's go ahead and get started tonight. We have, I believe, pull up my agenda, I too am having technical difficulties. But we have one item on the agenda, which is discussion regarding the proposed FYE 2021, City of Vermont Budget and Capital Budget. I believe we have a presentation.
Anthony? Sorry, I was having problems with sound. Anthony, do you need some help? You are muted, Anthony.
I am trying to do the, pull up the share.
The screen share, oh, it's working. You're good.
So everybody can see the presentation, hear me speaking?
Yes.
All right. First, as we are in this nearly last phase of the fiscal year 2020-21 budget process, we've gotten some questions and some amendment proposals from council members. And some background information has been requested that we will try to provide first. Councilmember Carter asked for this, just kind of historic information on general fund revenues. So you see that there is a fairly fixed pattern of slow growth in the general fund, but the standard deviation, if you will, is way high. There's a lot of variation from year to year. And on this next page is given some information that causes those variations. So the larger parts of the variations have to do with one-time revenues that come in from things like FEMA reimbursements that we got back in fiscal year 2008 for the disaster expenditures that we had that were reimbursed from FEMA. There have been some economically based drops in sales tax that you see recorded there that obviously had large impacts on our general fund revenues. In recent years, there's been some fairly large impacts due to the apportionments of sales tax from the general fund to the University North Park TIF fund. And then those revenues coming back in when we made that one-time correction of the overapportionment of sales tax to the TIF fund. So those are the largest reasons for the variations that you saw on the last slide. But overall, the general fund has a fairly steady growth pattern of 2%, 3% per year. And that again is what we budget based on is that long history of that slow growth. But where the growth occurs does have some variances at it. We had some questions, I believe this was from councilmember Behrmann, about the impact on room tax and what causes big changes in the room tax. And she specifically asked about the 9/11. And as we know, in response to the 9/11 terrorism act, the travel industry went through a fairly long sustained depressed period. Travel by air was shut down entirely. I reviewed the OU football schedule from that year. And what we found in 2001 was that, and I kind of remember this in thinking back on it, right after 9/11, and 9/11 itself was on a Tuesday. I remember that well because it was a council member, a council meeting night. But that next Saturday, the football game was canceled. It was supposed to be against Tulsa. And the football game was postponed from September the 18th, or thereabouts, until November. But as you see during that period, there was significant but fairly short-lived downturn in our room taxes. And then it came back fairly strongly the next fiscal year. So we hope that that will be the case again now. We have seen a pretty significant shutdown in our room tax-based hotel occupancies over the last month or so. But we hope that that'll come back. And again, we hope that there will be fans in the stands on football season. But we'll continue to monitor things. And as councilmember Behrmann was suggesting, if council wanted to subsidize the room tax or the arts portion of the room taxes, she was saying, from the general fund would be within your purview to do that. The next slides talk about our potential responses to what may be happening with our general fund sales tax. The first slide that you see here on line four, this page just reflects what you've already seen in the city manager's proposed budget. So as you see there on line four in column C, we are projecting that our sales tax revenues will be right on budget for this fiscal year and that there will be a slow growth of about 1.75% going into next fiscal year. This, and the bottom line of that would be that we would have some fund balance drawdown in this fiscal year, primarily related to the up-fronting of revenues to the public transit fund. But we would close the fiscal year this year with a reserve in excess of what we have as a minimum operating reserve on line 70 there. And we would close next fiscal year with still an operating reserve in excess of what our minimums are. So we are budgeting to be in a fairly healthy position and a fairly healthy fund balance position to absorb what may be coming. The next scenario talks about what if, what if we have to not deposit the sales taxes into the general fund that have been recorded in the University North Park TIF fund during this fiscal year? So you see that that would reduce our general fund revenues on line four in column C by about $3.2 million this fiscal year and about $1 million next fiscal year. So the impacts of that, these are the what we have budgeted for, would be significant. We are still hoping that that won't happen. Councilmember Carter had some questions about the timing of the hearing related to the petition and appeal of the judgment of the district court related to that. But at this point, we are still budgeting under the assumption that we will deposit those TIF revenues into the general fund this fiscal year. And then we won't have to make an apportionment in next fiscal year. So this is a scenario of a what if that we assume won't happen. The next portion here shows the combined impact of what we think may happen related to the COVID effect and our actions to slow the spread of the COVID virus and its impact on our sales tax in combination with what if we lost the revenue from University North Park. So obviously, that is a substantial decline to our sales tax on line four there that would result in a very bad situation. If that double whammy, if you will, were to happen, we would project that in this fiscal year, we would draw down on line 64 over $7 million of our fund balance. We would close this fiscal year on June the 30th, here in a few weeks, with a fund balance of only $1.15 million, which is $1.3 million short of our ordinance mandated operational reserve. And that's on line 70. If those two things were to come to pass, the COVID effect and the loss of the TIF revenues, then we would have to make some changes to the budget that we are about to adopt next week. Because under those assumptions, on line 66, you see that we would have a projected negative fund balance in the general fund. That would be illegal, and we can't allow that to happen. So again, under our best assumptions, we are okay. But we are projecting under the assumption that we will be able to deposit those University North Park sales tax revenues into the general fund. The next slide is in preparation for one of the amendments that you're going to see later. But it's just for your information, there was a request from councilmember Hall and councilmember Carter about some sidewalk projects that you see highlighted there. And one of the amendments is to include those three sidewalk projects, number 27, number 41, and number 46 on the prioritized list from the Public Works Department of those sidewalk projects. Taken together, they're about $185,000 that would be added to the capital fund. And again, it is within council's purview to do that if you want it to. And that will be one of the amendments that we'll talk about here in just a moment. So here is the memo that we send out every year at this point in the budget process that talks about the proposed amendments that have come forward from the council's discussions, emails that we've gotten, suggestions that we've gotten from staff on things that needed to be changed or corrected that would require amendments to the budget. There are some other things that we have corrected or that have happened that do not require amendments to the budget. But these are just things that would require amendments and council action to amend the fiscal year 21 budget. So as we go through, and if you have any questions about what I've talked about already, feel free to state them at any time, but we'll just go through these one at a time. The first one has to do with those sales tax assumptions that we just discussed. And in this first amendment, what is proposed here is that we would take the actions, the impacts on our sales tax related to the COVID effect in addition to what we have already built into the budget. This basically assumes that there's about another 2% reduction to our sales tax revenues on top of the 0.25% reduction that we had already built in for fiscal year 21. So the dollar amount is what council would be acting on here. You would be moving to reduce projected sales tax revenue in the general fund by $1,707,000. And then the public safety sales tax fund by $309,000. And then the capital improvement projects fund by $304,000. By the action of reducing the projected revenues in the public safety sales tax fund, that would have to increase the general fund subsidy to the public safety sales tax fund to keep it at a zero fund balance. And so all of those things would be done in that one motion. And again, this is all for council's consideration and discussion. But if you agree with that assumption that we should take a little bit more of an aggressive action related to projected impacts of the COVID effect, then this is what we would propose as a budget amendment. The second proposed amendment is about the $5.1 million federal transit administration grant that council's been discussing, the CARES Act money that was earmarked for Norman to build the public transit maintenance facility. And that's just the verbiage to do that amendment. $5.1 million in FTA grant revenue provided by the CARES Act would be deposited to the transportation and parking fund and then transferred to the capital fund. And in the capital fund, it would match the $2.2 million that council reallocated on your May the 12th meeting. And it would be matched by some public safety sales tax funds that are already allocated to that project. So there'd be about a total of $8.2 million for that fire transit maintenance facility in the capital fund. The next proposed amendment has to do with increased premiums for our health and dental benefit insurance contributions. And this is on the employer contribution side. This is based on recommendations from our city managers, acceptance of the recommendations from our employee benefit consultant in order to keep the risk management fund and the health insurance fund solvent. They're proposing to increase premiums by about 8%. And that is the cost that you see there of about $184,000 in that amendment. That $684,000 would be paid by all of the funds of the city that have employees budgeted into those funds. So obviously, the major impacted funds would be the general fund and the sanitation fund. But all of the funds of the city that have some employees in them would see some increases to their allocations for those premium increases. The fourth amendment has to do with the correction where we caught a double counting error in the capital fund and the street maintenance budget net. All of those street maintenance allocations, taken together, is a decrease of about $1.8 million, which enables some of the other capital projects that council wanted to do to be financed. So number four, five, six, and seven kind of work together. Amendment number five is to increase the capital fund budget by $850,000 to pay for the public transit transfer facility that was talked about in your May 19th study session. This would fund the estimated cost to purchase the facility that we talked about in that executive session or some other facility and to remodel the facility. And that's just our best estimate from the city attorney's office in the Public Works Department of what it will cost to buy and refurbish that facility. If we don't succeed in purchasing that facility, negotiations fall through for whatever reason, then we still have that money in the capital budget to explore some other facility for downtown transfer facility. Amendment number six has to do with the strategic housing study, as it is at least termed here. This is the homeless study that was talked about as council was discussing the general obligation bond proposal to put $5 million, if you will, into that general obligation bond proposal. And this study would educate that proposal as to what we would do with that $5 million. That could only be used for capital facilities with the general obligation bond money. But as was discussed with council, we wanted to take a more holistic approach to affordable housing, not just building a facility, but the needs for servicing in that facility and the holistic needs of our homeless community. So that's what this study is geared to do. And this would just put $250,000 into the capital budget to pay for that study. The seventh amendment has to do with those sidewalk projects that I talked about just a moment ago that councilmembers Hall and Carter had requested. As you saw, they are a ways down the priority list, at least as it has been generated over years by the Public Works Department and the needs identified by previous councils. But council could just decide to amend the budget to place those projects into this fiscal year by this action. The eighth amendment is always my favorite, where council empowers me and my staff at the inevitable typos and that sort of thing that are in the budget document that have no impact on the finances. But a lot of times, we want to clean up the tables, clean up the presentation of organization charts. This just empowers the staff to do that.
Yeah.
Got a question?
You have a couple of questions that have been raised. I don't know if you want to, you just have a few more? If you want to wait till you get to the end, or?
Yeah, I just have about three more.
Okay.
The ninth amendment has to do with an additional personnel in the transit department. This is for a part-time transit technician. And that has been discussed with council already. This is just putting that into the budget by amendment. The 10th amendment also has been talked about by council. When you adopted the CARES Act funding to be received by the city through the Community Development Block Grant, CARES Act allocations, one of the things that you approved in that resolution was additional personnel, a homeless coordinator or additional homeless technician to be added into the CDBG fund. And this just amends the budget for that additional cost in personnel. And then the 11th and final amendment has to do with the inclusive subcommittee's recommendation to add the equity and diversity manager to the budget. This proposed amendment would have a net cost of $5,014. It would eliminate the development coordinator position that is currently vacant and replace it with the equity and diversity manager, as it has been termed by our classification professionals in the HR department. So I will try to respond to any questions. I think most of my colleagues on the management team can also respond to any questions that I cannot. And I appreciate council's time and attention.
Okay, the first question comes from councilmember Patron.
Where did she go?
Hi, I'm here. Can you see?
Okay.
Okay. Sorry, I'm trying to make a note here. Okay. Going way back when you talked about the double whammy scenario, that was to have no TIF fund money and to have a bad COVID effect. Am I understanding correctly that that would leave us at a negative $2.675 million?
That would leave us at a negative $2.675 million from our mandated operating reserve.
Okay.
On line 70. What the legal requirement is, is to adopt a budget with a positive fund balance. And that is by state law. On line 66, we would have to make up at least $282,000.
Okay, that's what I thought, the $281,775. Why wouldn't we just go ahead and adopt a budget that is the, to make that come to a zero, so that we don't have a major panic should both of those things happen?
Well, I would suggest that the reason for that would be, as you recall, in order to absorb all of those things, we were taking some fairly drastic budget actions in order to mitigate against that. But if council wanted to do that, you certainly could. We'd be back to the not mowing the medians and that sort of thing.
Or, I mean, there's probably several different things we could choose. But I guess what I'm getting at is that maybe council would want to be brainstorming on how to, because we're not talking about several million dollars. If we're talking about $281,000, we can probably nickel and dime it to figure that out to where we're not, it seems like the most responsible thing to do. So anyway, that's the first thing, and that's rhetorically speaking. And I guess we can think about that. I have some questions on the others, but I'm just going to do these two first. Under number 10, the CARES Act personnel for a homeless coordinator, I had a resident that reached out to say that they felt like that was not legal because we would be using COVID money on a position that didn't historically exist. So that can't be a COVID effect use of care funds? Is that something that we have looked into at all?
I'll ask the city attorney or the planning director to respond to that one.
My understanding of the grant, and it is Lisa Craig, who would be administering this piece of the grant, is that she's looked through that and she believes this to be a position that could be funded, at least in part, by that grant funding.
Okay. I would just want to make sure that we double check that for obvious reasons. Okay.
Your Honor, on that COVID question, one of the issues that we recognize is problematic is that each bucket of funds from the federal government, they call them all CARES Act. And there's many varieties. This particular budget for CARES Act was Community Development Block Grant specific and resulted in an additional allocation to our usual and customary entitlement. So yeah, this particular bucket definitely has a different set of rules than other CARES Act monies that we have access to. The other bucket of CARES Act monies that most of us are familiar with is available for us to seek reimbursement for costs incurred. So the CARES Act you're looking at in the budget for that particular position is under the Community Development Block Grant bucket of money designed specifically to address needs of people of low and moderate income. And our homeless population definitely qualifies for those dollars. But yeah, we'll see if we can get that in writing for your comfort.
Yeah, I appreciate, and I'm hesitant of it. I just want to make sure that we're already crossing teams. And then number 11. It was my understanding that that position was going to be taking the place of an assistant city attorney.
Assistant city manager, if that's the position, if that's the diversity and equity officer. And actually, what we found budgetarily during the upcoming fiscal year, while the one-stop shop, the remodel of the former central library is underway, that the most pressing need for staffing was the implementation of this position. So in order to fund this position without any additional general fund burden, a vacant position we had under our development coordinator, we're basically exchanging our diversity and equity officer position for our development coordinator position. So the minimum impact to the budget's a little over $5,000. So not a city attorney position at risk. And I think the city attorney's office did offer up one position during budget development to help us keep our budget as lean as possible.
Okay, well, just for clarification, is this the same position that was spoken about at the protest yesterday?
Yes.
That is the one.
Okay, so I'm just trying to figure out if the, yesterday, the way I understood it yesterday was that it was for, we were swapping out an open position for assistant city attorney. And so since then, basically, we've decided that.
No, that's not correct. A news reporter reported it wrong. It was never an assistant city attorney. So we haven't changed.
I haven't read anything on the news. I just was there. That's what I'm trying to figure out. I don't mind what it is. I just want to make sure that I'm clear. Really, I really don't care. I hope, I want staff, I want this position and I want staff to have the positions filled that they have filled. Just trying to make sure the record. The other question, I am going to pass it on. Thank you.
Okay, the other one that was in line has now passed. No longer needs to ask the question, so I'm not seeing any other. Oh, here's one. Councilmember Holman.
I think I had sent in some questions to staff about the sidewalk projects. Because I do think the, both Cruz and Barry Road definitely need those to be done. I just did have some questions about a couple of other sidewalk projects. I just had to have some questions about a couple of other sidewalk projects. Specifically, Brooks Railroad Crossing, classing from Brooks to Highway 77, not sure how you qualify that. And then the flood from Maine to Acres. If those would be impacted by the by these amendments and or if they're impacted by something else completely different.
I can fill that one. Those projects are all actually already funded. So they were from previous year's funding and we're like on the two projects on flood and classing that you mentioned. They're about 90% complete with plans. They're working on getting the right of way accomplished for those. We're looking at going out in the near future on those. Just depends on how long it takes us to get the right of way accomplished. The Brooks sidewalk, we currently are negotiating with the railroad. They want a rather extensive crossing now. And we're working with them to try to get that project underway. But all three of those projects are already funded, so it would not be impacted by this move.
Okay. Thank you, Scott. I appreciate that.
Steva, before you go on, may I just share that was Scott Sturt, our city engineer. And as you guys come on and answer questions, would you go ahead and identify yourself for the public? Thank you.
Thank you. That are those are the only questions I have right now. I think the other one I had is already answered, so. Just offhand, those amendments seem pretty okay to me. So especially like the transit transfer facility ones. So I'm excited to see that. And definitely tough budget issue we're having to deal with here. They're probably going to be more difficult to do with in the coming months, but yes, it could always be worse. Thanks.
Council member Scanlon.
I too was happy to see the transfer facility, this Stephen Holman Memorial Transfer Facility that we're going to build. But but and so that's a social comment.
Memorial. I've cast on.
No, no, not so fast.
You're gonna kill him, Bill?
The Stephen Holman appreciation terminal.
I gave blood, right? I'm not thinking clearly. The but other than that, the number six, I I have a better understanding of what we're trying to do after some email exchanges with Lisa. And I think that's good. And I like what I see frankly, in terms of preparation for should we get the bond issue that we'll know what to do with it. But my my question really is ancillary to that, and it has to do with a warming shelter. Nowhere have we talked about that yet. It's something that, well, the committee has. We know we want to do it. We don't know where, we don't know how much. But it seems to me that somewhere there needs to be identified a straw man, an amount that would cover a warming shelter for this coming winter, this coming FY. So that's my comment.
We did receive your your request, council member. Staff was of the opinion that just as we did this past winter, we would find a city facility available. One that was talked about was the former JIC facility by Westwood. And we would staff it with available staff and volunteers and just kind of do it as we did it this year.
And that's my point, that we lucked into some money and we lucked into a location. But before we identified that location, we did look at that facility that you just mentioned and found it inadequate to need. So I'm open to any suggestions and further investigation of that. But I just have to wonder out loud. And I don't mean to make too big an issue out of it, but it is an important thing.
Okay, Mayor, I'm not seeing any other hands raised right now.
Then I'll raise my hand. I had a question about the school arterial program. I know that we have that giant list, which is crazy expensive how sidewalks are. But I assume that these were in the school arterial their own list because it could could qualify for, I think, federal funding. Does the do those projects qualify for federal funding? And if so, did other projects move up with those being paid for now?
Okay, Scott Sturt, city engineer. These projects, we actually only run the one consistent project list. But we do have them, we know which projects are going into which category. For example, the ones that are highlighted in purple are what we call the school sidewalk programs, which is the school and arterial program. At this point, we have not been very successful recently in getting the federal funding on these projects. And we've been using the funding that we get every year through this budget process and the CIP budget. And we basically typically go down the list in order to to attack those projects. For example, the number two ranked project this year is the Berry Road North. And that is a school and sidewalk program. And we've got it in the program for the 2021 to expend that portion of the funding that we utilize. But we have not been getting the federal funds on many of these projects recently.
Okay, and what schools do they go to again?
You're going to put me on the on the spot here. McKinley for the Cruz Street. And actually McKinley, all the projects in McKinley School District.
Well, I fully support making it safer to walk to school. And I support these amendments. Hopefully, we can get more federal funding for that because I know that there are other schools that still need improvements, but especially for that part of Norman where they just aren't there. And not, it's not just a repair issue. And with younger children, I think that's you know, all of our children deserve to walk on sidewalks to schools, but the little ones for sure, I think, need sidewalks. So I fully support those amendments. Thank you, Scott.
Okay, we have council member Hall.
I was just gonna weigh in with a couple of comments about the amendments from council member Carter and myself. You know, we do not take lightly putting these forward because of all of the very hefty discussions we've had about our budget this year. But this is the Cruz project for me. This is the one project that I've heard the most about. It's to McKinley School. And there are no sidewalks on either side of that one block between Flood and Pickard. And there's literally no safe way for those kids to get there. So I realize that, you know, these projects have been ranked. I started discussing this in September because it was one of the first things I heard about from constituents when I was appointed to council. And it's interesting, even since September, how this particular project has bounced around on on the sidewalk priority list. But I appreciate the consideration from the council because I felt like this was a significant safety issue. It's been requested by the principal of McKinley for years and years and years. And I realize that there are other projects that are equally impact the safety of our kids, but felt like I needed to represent my constituents with the one project that I've heard about the most. So thank you.
Totally understand. Mr. Sturtz, how long will it take to complete these sidewalks if and when these budget amendments are approved?
Typically, we go out to bid in June this month to try to get all of the projects on the sidewalk program under contract to one contractor. And then we work on them throughout the year. Obviously, if it's a school project, we do try to do it during the summer months where it doesn't have a problem with, you know, causing children to be able to get to school safely or being the way a parent should be able to drive or bus to get to the schools. So we typically look at trying to get those projects either out first, or we do wait until school's out to try to address those projects. Sometimes shorter project, we may address it over spring break. I did fail to add that Iowa Street project is also a school sidewalk project serving Cleveland School. So we kind of got a double dose here. So we didn't approach the Berry Road project as a school project, but just as a public arterial road needing a sidewalk to be completed. That wraps up that section of roadway. So we basically go out for these as quickly as we could. These projects typically are simple enough that we do not need to do extensive design contracts on them. If we need to do anything, we'll do it in-house, or we'll just design them in the field because we're usually pretty easy to lay in. So we haven't put the bid package out for this year yet because we're waiting to see how we fall with these amendments. So we could be out, be coming back to council in July with contract award and then try to get started. And it'd be hard because it's one contractor. We can't do them all simultaneously. Because these projects normally go to a smaller contractor that usually has one or two crews that they keep very busy trying to get these projects done for us throughout the year. So it just takes some interesting scheduling to get this many school projects worked in and not interfere too much with school travel.
Excellent. Well, it's been a while since my PTA days, but I feel like walk to school days on October, maybe? So it'd be fun to have that in place for that event this year. Thank you.
I'm not seeing any other hands raised, Mayor.
Okay. And that, we were just discussing the amendments and everyone has all questions answered? Okay.
So my last, my last comment to council would just be, as you see, each amendment has a blank next to the council member who will make the motion. So you just might speak amongst yourselves about who would like to make each motion. But that doesn't have to be done tonight.
So council members, I'll take the one I propose with the, what are we calling now equity and diversity manager?
Officer.
Officer. Okay, so go ahead. And Brenda, would you like to have them email you if?
That'd be great.
And if you, if she doesn't get any emails, emails, I'm sure she'll just assign it to us. So. Anything else? All right. Well, with that, this study session is adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks, Josh.
Thank you.